Okay, it's six o'clock. I'd like to open the meeting. And I have one adjustment to the agenda. Laura has asked that we discuss her attending a couple of VLCT workshops. One for municipal budgeting and then another for the VLCT town fair accompanying Brandy.
The only question is municipal budgeting. Are you working with Brandy? Or are you going to look into sub for her? Or is there any special reason you want to?
It's not just the municipal budgeting. That is one of the things. But the other part of it is that the select board has to, well, doesn't have to. They ask about whether or not the board has attended any kind of educational, anything, to help with anything they have to work on throughout the year. And usually there isn't much attendance from you guys.
So you count?
Secretary.
She's our assistant also. She's four hours a week does select board support.
And it's personally good for me as well on a personal level because I'm pursuing a accounting degree. So the more information I understand about budgeting, you know, it may be useful in the future here for that as well. Also, I can read back information, you know, any changes to the laws or any of that stuff that you guys might miss not being there.
I have attended it once when early in my select board days. And it sounds like it's pretty much the same thing. And I would go again because I really would like to kind of resolve this reserve fund question that, you know, we kind of go around and around the loop on. But I'll, I might send Laura with that question and pursue it with VLCT in my own time.
Yeah, I don't have a problem with it.
So I just would make a motion that we approve the funding to send Laura to the...
Second.
On favor? The more people that know stuff, the better.
Yep. Public comment. I have a public comment as the default health officer in town. I just wanted to state that there has been a bloom of cyanobacteria, blue-green algae on Eastlong Pond and Nichols Pond. Not a serious high alert bloom, but obvious presence of the bloom, you know. So there are warning signs, health alert signs that have been posted on the roads into the camps on Eastlong and posted on the dam at Nichols. Probably lasted about a half hour on the dam. And then shortly, maybe in another week or so, when we see signs that the bloom has pretty much gone away, we'll be sampling the water for toxins.
Yeah, somebody from the state cannot sample?
They gave, I have a sample kit.
Oh, definitely. There can't be high phosphorus levels in those lakes.
Well, you know, it's puzzling that, you know, all of the other, other lakes and ponds have it that I know of. And they're much shallower. They're much more, there are more camps.
I saw your email and I couldn't understand it.
Yeah, I don't understand it either.
I was thinking Buck Lake was high phosphorus for some reason. One of these small lakes has got a lot of phosphorus.
Cranberry Meadow Pond two or three years ago had a blue-green algae out, but again, not serious.
The only reason I'm asking is that they've always attributed it to high phosphorus. But now we can't have high phosphorus here. There's no farm, there's not enough infrastructure here to do it, I think.
One thing that did happen, at least from Eastlong to Nichols, is that that May, end of May flooding, with village flooding, there was a significant chunk of a bank below the dam at Eastlong that washed into the brook. I have a camp right on the mouth of the brook from Eastlong on Nichols. And there's this huge beautiful delta of sand now that wasn't there very easily there. So that could have been, you know, for Nichols, that would have been a good input of phosphorus in May.
Definitely not an expert, but...
Yeah. At Eastlong, I haven't, I don't, I don't know what happened there, but anyway.
I remember seeing it once or twice in my term of one lake just having these weird high numbers for no reason at all. Yeah. The lakes that didn't have camps on them and stuff.
The state person said that, you know, every body of water has blue-green algae in it. But it's certain conditions that allow a bloom to happen. So anyway, that's being watched and did the best I could to notify people. So that's a public comment. I would make a motion that we approve the bills to the town.
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
And then I would make a motion that we approve the minutes from the August 12th select board meeting. On favor?
Aye.
Okay, so sign them on a dotted line. Let's see, I'll use my blue pen. Let's see, today is 26. I always write the date where you're supposed to write approved.
Consistency is the key.
Thank you. So let's see, Brandy. I'm gonna guess she's got... Brandy, are you ready to come in or should we go into something else?
We got dog licenses before, Brandy, anyway.
Yeah, dog warrants first.
Dog warrant at first.
Right, that's right. I forgot. Yep. So let's see.
You're off the hook for a minute.
Yeah, you got a minute.
Yeah, probably a few minutes actually. So you got the floor, Kim. All yours.
Thank you. All of you have a list of dogs who were registered last year that haven't registered this year. State requires them to be registered by 30 April. The state gives them until like May before a list is sent to you guys. And it's almost September before I start getting involved with it. Typically, I visit and speak to the owner or at the very least leave a note on their door that I was there and why I was there. And I try to go at a minimum of three times.
Wow, that's a lot of work.
And we're still not getting somewhere with some of these places. Last year, we did issue a warrant. It was a very specific warrant. And within 48 hours, the owner had registered the dog. I would request that the town do that again. And the way it would work is I would submit a list of names and addresses to the town for them to... That and some that are not listed on there. For the town to write up the warrant. And I would request that maybe you authorize Brian to sign the warrant. Just so that I don't have to go tracking down select board time. Last time, I think it was the chair who did it.
Yeah. Yeah.
And this list is not all inclusive. To give you an example, you guys know how long Buck Lake is, the road.
The road, yeah.
And within 2,000 feet, there was only two dogs out of nine registered. So you're looking at only about 20% of the residents registered the dog in a very short area. In that particular area. But, you know, we haven't even begun to really address Westwood because it's so far and difficult. But, you know, you've got North Hill, Bliss Road, you know, you've got some of these roads. Cabot's got some still on it, you know. There is a certain amount of people that are not inclined to follow the law in that they don't think it's the town's business to be in there.
Yeah. Do you, so do you want this letter to be a warning that a warrant will be issued if they don't register their dog?
No, I want the actual warrant.
Okay.
If I have plenty of time to register, come in then.
Well, Germany crickets, they've had until April 30th. The town has sent, how many letters? Two letters to everybody on the list.
Okay.
Time for a one.
What does the warrant say?
What the warrant says is that I am authorized to basically seize the dog at a specific address for not having the dog registered in accordance with blah, 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 blah.
Philosopher's. So is there a warrant, kind of like a template?
There is. And she has it and she's familiar with it because she's the one who did up the last one, I believe.
Okay.
So, and on top of all that, you had me going there three times at least and either speaking to the individual or leaving a note saying, hey, I'm here about an unregistered dog. Here's my phone number.
So do these have, should these be sent like registered mail?
Typically, what happened, or we did in the past, was a natural warrant. And this is again why it's time consuming is I got to link up with the state police. And we got to go to the house and the person's got to be in there. And here's your warrant. Thank you for the dog.
So you deliver the warrant and you seize the dog?
Seize the dog at the same time. It's a warrant to arrest, basically.
What are you gonna do with all these dogs? What are you gonna do with all these dogs?
Same thing we've been doing in the past. They go to the kennel, dependent on the nature of the thing. We've had one where the owner got the dog registered the next day. And this town let me know about it and the guy came and got his dog. The other one, the guy had to go to Hardwick, pay the veterinarian for the shots. Then I had to transport the dogs to the vet's office, get the shots, bring them back to the kennel, notify the owner that the paperwork was down at the town clerk's office, vaccination. And then they came down here and registered the dogs. The third option is, again, dependent on vaccinations, is to keep the dog for 10 days and then surrender it to the Humane Society. If the owner has not claimed the dog within 10 days, it's automatic abandonment.
Now, the one over on Greenwood Lake Road, you obviously didn't seize that one the first time you were over there. Was that just because you couldn't get a hold of them or you gave them multiple opportunities?
I gave them multiple opportunities and...
So I think, you know, first trip of you visiting them, they probably shouldn't lose their dog.
Oh, no, no. Well, first of all, they've already had...
Three trips.
Well, they've, well, they've had three trips than I had.
Yeah.
So you've been out to all these places three times already?
Not all of those. That's why I said I will submit a list to the one, to the town clerk of the ones that I have been to three times.
Do you have a rough idea of how many homes, households that number is that you've been three times?
Right now, I'm looking at three to five homes.
Okay.
Some I've been to once and I got to go two more times. Some I've already been twice and the owner left notices. The owner has not contacted me nor has the owner done it.
Have these people been warned about what non-compliance would, do they know that?
Ignorance of the law is no excuse.
I know, I know that's true, Kim, but...
If I leave a notice saying that they're, I'm here to, you know, because of the dog not being registered and the person doesn't get a hold of me, you know, at what point, you know, people are, can avoid me by just not answering the door? People can avoid me by not being there when they suspect I might be around? People have come right out and lied to me, you know?
I'm sure you get that from the gammon.
But it sounded like the letter had the consequences on it, so...
We also have the power to issue fines instead of just issuing them first. You could also issue them an actual ticket through the judicial bureau.
Who can write those?
I can.
Oh, you can't write them?
But we went down that road before.
Right.
We know the problems with that.
Yeah.
You gotta go to court.
You gotta go to court.
Same thing with my fire warden tickets is...
Yeah.
And it's hard to get the actual correct information if the person doesn't volunteer.
And if you don't have the correct information, then the fine is worthless. Yeah, I remember all of that from...
Yeah.
Yeah, it just seems kind of drastic to show up with the state police and take some of these dogs away. I'm afraid somebody might get really mad.
Well, we had that one guy, he was pretty tipped, but...
You don't want to see him get shot.
Well, that's kind of what I'm thinking, actually.
With two police officers on scene. There was no interreacting adversely. And the owner did register the dog in within 48 hours, which is the ultimate goal.
I mean, I'm just thinking if like the third, this is kind of hindsight now, but if the third visit, if there was just a change in the wording that's saying, you know, we have contacted, notified you three times and the next time that we come, you know, if you don't comply, then we will be issuing a warrant and returning to seize the dogs. If there's something like that.
If you'd be willing to draw a card, kind of like what we have, with that on it, on the third one.
We're certainly got the information.
I can put it on the door, you know, like have them color coded.
To me, just in the proper, I mean, that would feel more right to me.
Give them the last shot, last third visit, back it to the door.
So no more extra visits, just staple that to the house and...
About registered letter, they have to sign for it so the owner can...
Yeah, we could do, we could do that.
Fight then becomes they don't sign for the letter.
Right, that's another way of...
But you can try.
Yeah.
We went to this building and they just didn't pick them up. And we ended up having the sheriff department add an additional expense to...
Is the sheriff department cheaper than the state police or does it...
Well, there's something the state police prefers to stay out of. I went around with, I think, both the state police and the sheriff and whatever reason.
So did they provide somebody to do that service?
The sheriff department did collect the...
As far as when you go to collect a dog, do the state police come with you?
The state police comes with me, which is why it's time consuming because I've got to coordinate with them and shift changeovers and that. And you're probably looking more in the evening. So you're talking about the afternoon, you know, the evening shift. And because I work nights, you're probably looking at, you know, Tuesday night, Wednesday night, Thursday nights as the nights, you know.
Now, is there a fee charge from the state police for this that we have to add in or no? Nope, they just came out with the sheriff's charges.
Sheriff, I'll be charged. State police, they require you because it's, we're enforcing the state law.
So does that sound doable on your end to have this third warning that the next, you know, if you don't comply with this, then you are forcing the town to issue you a warrant and to come and see, and come and seize your dog?
I got no problem with it because I'm going out three times anyway. So if he wants to do it, like a three dollar...
I think a good, strong warning, these are the consequences.
The yellow one, second.
My next visit will be with the sheriff or the state police.
And we'll seize it up.
Yeah. Bottom line, this is, you've been out three times.
So what's the four, five, or six you have now? How do we want to address those?
I would give them one more.
Okay. If you can make up the same type of notice.
Yeah.
If you're willing to do that, I mean, just to give them that final strong warning, you know, you could, this is the fourth time I've been here and if I have to come again, it'll be with a warrant to seize the dog.
Well, I know I'm one person in particular, I won't mention the name. But there's a person on Route 14 that last time we met, after I had left here, I went to several houses, his being one of them. And I said, you know, you need to get the dog registered by such date because I'm going to be going to the select board and I'm going to be issuing a warrant. You know, requesting them to issue a warrant to seize dogs, you know. And he still hasn't done it. He still hasn't done it. And he has multiple dogs.
I'm leaning toward that he's got five or so. He should probably issue the warrants and see what happens with them. Just to not run Kim around.
Right, yeah, that's why I wanted to make sure it's okay with him.
I do see the side having work in enforcement of my day job that if you don't do it, I'll tell you again. That's to be frustrating for a person.
Right. You know, there's a couple up on Buck Lake, you know, that I've been to. Some once, some multiple times. There's a couple on Dog Pond Road that I've been to once and I need to go a second time. And actually, there's three on Dog Pond, you know. And one I have interacted with text, one I had been physically there as a spokesperson, and one I have been to his, their property and left a notice of why I was there. You know, so there's five families right there. And, you know, I got a couple up on North Hill.
Well, I think, you know, as Paul said, any of them that you have been to three times, and especially the one where you mentioned that, you know, that if they didn't comply that you would be, the town would be issuing a warrant, you should probably go ahead and do that.
I'll go ahead and make a motion for that if it's all right.
Sure.
I'll make a motion that we issue the warrants on the dogs that you, the dogs that you've issued the three warnings.
I'll second that.
And the second half of that motion would be the future third warning. You get a letter explaining or a notice just explaining that what would happen next. And then you'll come back to us.
Yeah, we're not coming back again to warn you. We're gonna, next time we come back, we're taking the dog.
Probably, so that makes sense as you second, yeah. So then just do it in little chunks, you know, probably keep four or five at a time. Like, hey, see out there doing 15 dog walks.
Yeah, 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 no, no.
Cattle truck full of dogs.
But there's a, there's a long enough list that you may want to be seeing us more than less.
Well, I was wondering if I could, if it would be possible to interact with Brian because just because it's easier to track him down. I know where he works.
Well, do we have to approve the warnings at a, the warrants at a meeting?
No.
We don't?
Okay.
You've already given me permission. So now it's just a matter of the process of complying with your request, which is three or four visits. Last one being was a notice. And then once I've complied that, then it would be coming to the town clerk and says, okay, here's the name, the address, the phone number of the person that I, person or persons I've been to. Would you type up a warrant and have Brian sign them? Or let me know when it's done and I will take it to Brian to have him sign. And then I got to, once Brian signs it, then I got to coordinate with the state police.
Yep.
As far as I don't...
I don't have an issue.
You're talking week, two weeks, you know, process just to go through it.
So basically, I guess for us, if one signature is enough to send him out, so whoever he catches up.
Where the select board will designate you as the signee on the warrants. Okay.
Well, you can see the one that we did last time. I know where it is.
Sure.
Sure.
And I will check with VLCE to make sure that we don't have to approve every single warrant on a select board.
And I just want to, go ahead, sorry.
No.
I just want to make sure you don't go there alone on the dog seizure without police. If they aren't coming, you don't go. Because I don't, this should never arise. If violence starts to take place, they, you just need to leave with the police. I don't want to see anybody getting violent over it.
We could see it, yeah.
Yeah, it's definitely a possibility. I mean, a good possibility.
It's a very good possibility. I've had it with fires. We get there and I just, we have to step back and wait for the police to go in there. But I've told complainers before, I said, if we go in here with the police, this could get ugly. If you want it to be ugly, how ugly do you want to get over a fire?
Good life experience was that one. You got, it gets quite ugly on a one-to-one basis. But when two state troopers show up at 10 o'clock at night banging on the door.
Yeah, it's hard to...
It becomes quite a dussel.
Yeah. Especially the stateies are there.
But I will check with, just for my own peace of mind, I'll check with VLCE to make sure that, I mean, maybe our motion should, we could state that we are approving that our animal control officer issue warrants after three warnings and that we designate Brian as the select board signee. Because I know the select board does need to, it's actually the select board that's issuing the warrant here through you.
And I, you know, based on the last warrant that we issued, the state police did research the law and the law was quite clear. And the state police, you know, made it perfectly clear to the owner that they had researched it. This is in fact legit and, you know.
And you keep a log of the visits and so that you have documentation that way?
Well, you know, that's how I get paid.
Well, then of course you keep a log.
Good plan.
You know, you guys don't pay me just on my say-so, you know. I've got to put down the date, the time, the number, hours, minutes, the mileage.
Yeah. Okay. So we have a motion and I'll second it. Or did you already second it?
Yeah, I already seconded it.
We can second one.
All in favor?
Aye.
That's all right.
Favor of it.
We approved it.
Yeah.
Okay. So I will be with you.
And Laura will be our official overseer of the process.
When have you been being...
I will be here Wednesday and Thursday.
Wednesday and Thursday?
Yep.
Okay, I'll stop in Wednesday and see you and see what we're at as far as the color codes and...
And language, they want on the poster anyway.
Yeah. Make it, make it good and strong.
Just nice, strongly worded, the same. Our next visit will be coming with a warrant to collect your pet.
Yeah, with a warrant and the state police.
And give them a rough idea of what the cost will be if you have to come out with the state police and they get impounded. Maybe that's what will...
That would help. Money, money does help.
What's the licensing fee? 20 bucks?
11 if they're spayed or neutered and they're late.
Which is not even so much.
17 if they're not spayed.
Few hundred dollars.
And then they have to pay for the kennel time, yeah?
So what did it run if you had to go on a...
$10 a day.
Yeah. Is there a fee for you going and getting it too?
Well, yeah, because that's, that's my allowance. That's what I was...
So roughly, what would it cost somebody that you had to go seize your dog and bring back and keep for three days?
Well, if, okay, so you're talking for $17?
If they're not neutered.
$17 for the not neutered. And usually an hour, that's another 10 bucks, so that's 27. Mileage, you know, at least, you know, four to five miles, so you're talking a couple dollars. And then $10 a day for three days, so that's 30 dollars. And on top of that, if you want to go in and says, you, because I've done this when I've talked to people. I says, if I wanted to, I could issue you a ticket for X number of dollars per dog, per incident. If you don't have the dog registered, if you have three dogs, you know, that's three counts of not having the dog registered at $50 a pop. That's $150 right there. Because your dog isn't registered, it's not wearing a tag, which is another fine of 150 whatever dollars. And then there's also, so you're up to $300 there. And you can also tap on another charge of wanting to not have the dog under control when not on the property, which is another, you know, 50, 60 dollars. So you're looking at 300, 400, 50, 500, something, 500 plus dollars.
And then also, you bring it to a kennel and if they don't claim the dog within 10 days, it gets sent to the Humane Society?
It gets turned over to the Humane Society. State laws specifies that if the owner does not claim his dog within 10 days... State laws specifies that if the owner does not claim his dog within ten days, it's considered abandonment.
I mean, you could mention all the fines, but, I mean, by then you've totally overwhelmed the person and maybe...
Something short and sweet.
Yeah.
Well, that's why I said, you know...
You can just say you're responsible for repaying all the costs associated with taking the dog.
You could put something, say that, you know, like the cost, you know, can exceed over five hundred dollars, you know?
If the town chooses, we could.
Yeah.
I might make them run right down here the next day and pay their twelve bucks.
Well, you can...
You can have the dog.
You fed three or four, then it showed up, um...
Well, it worked on County Road up by Greenwood Lake.
Yeah, that worked and...
The one on Buck Lake?
That had been three years not registering and it came in the other day and...
Within...
A day or two.
Couple of days and it's been there.
Was that the problem dogs that you mentioned?
Yeah, and, um, you know, there's, like I said, there's at least nine dollars on Buck Lake. And at the time I started, there was only two registered.
Sounds like you're gonna be busy.
I wonder if we should put something out on Front Porch Forum saying that there is gonna be an initiative to...
Can't hurt, yeah, the more information, the...
I see yours posted, you know, about the algae and, you know, that, so people do see them and read them.
Yeah, people know, yeah, that's our best way of communicating, I think, with people in town, seriously.
Have I chewed up enough of your time today?
We're good.
Thanks for doing this thankless work.
Yes, you're getting thanked.
I'd give you a cookie if you had one. Now it's the treasurer's report.
Yes, let's see if Brandy's ready.
There she is right here.
Oh. She was listening.
And Laura, thank you for assisting with all of that.
So there was no transfer needed, um... So in the last two weeks, we took in five thousand five hundred thirteen dollars and forty-seven cents in delinquencies. And other income... For the current property taxes, we took in fifty-four thousand five hundred ninety-seven dollars and ninety-four cents.
So that's starting to real land?
Yes, um, land records recording, three hundred and sixty-three dollars, coffees, fifty-eight, marriage license, eighty dollars. Other income, um...
How's our, how's our standing with the, um, the outstanding delinquent taxes compared to times in the past? Just kind of a rough idea, are we doing...
I'd have to do a report, I haven't, yeah.
Okay, I'm just curious to know.
Seems like it's coming in pretty well, Ron's doing a really good job of collecting.
Last year was, was quite a bit less than the previous year, so, yeah.
Yeah, he seems to have a method that works.
Yeah.
So due to, due from, the last page, um, I did take in, it was a lot more payments, tax payments, over the weekend, so I have not done that deposit. Um, I was hoping that with that one that I could pay off the tax anticipation loan. Um... Sooner and, and, um...
But not quite yet, not quite there yet?
Well, no, once I do this deposit, everything's cleared to bank, give it three, four days. Um, and then I'd like to come back and pay it off. And it'll have to be a check to show on our records to offset, um, our liabilities.
Yeah.
Showing that we own a, owe a, um... Other things, we meet with Rhonda Bennett tomorrow.
Right, tomorrow, that was Wednesday.
On Tuesday, wasn't it Tuesday?
I think it's Wednesday, eleven AM.
Let me check.
Okay, that's my memory.
Tuesday in my head.
Yeah, well, my, you know, my memory's not so great either, so... My memory is Wednesday at eleven, because I remember we talked, I had the Cabot Road meeting in the morning and then we swayed, checked, you know, we checked with each other on time, later on that day.
Okay.
That's how I remember it. I'll fill you guys in on that in a few moments when we get there, but...
So I posted on Front Porch Forum today, um, just alone today. Last week was probably around, on Thursday, seven envelopes, so I've never had so many return addresses. There's no sender and the only way for me to know that you have an address change is if you tell me. Um...
Are those local, local returns, you know, people that have a local address?
Some, and some are not.
So some people won't see the front porch.
I'll be Googling crazily tomorrow, trying to make sure they get their tax bill, you know, on time, but, um, yeah, so... It's getting frustrating at this point, but...
So those that do get returned and then you have to find them and send them out?
The only thing I do is try and Google or find neighbors that know how to contact them by phone. Um, but yeah, I mean, as it goes on, they're not gonna have a sixty days' warning. And I have the letter stating that it was mailed and returned.
It's really on them to give us an address change.
Right, it's up to them, yeah.
I don't want anybody go delinquent because of a simple thing that they didn't forward the address.
Yeah.
Come October.
That sounds like a bit of, a bit of work, yeah, because some people don't even have landline phones, you just don't know how to get ahold of them.
Right.
So I put that out there and hopefully it reaches enough people.
Mm-hmm.
But, yeah, I'll be trying to contact neighbors of the locations of the land, if anybody...
Yeah.
Some, if they don't live in state, then they have the neighbors keep an eye on their land and then I get it that way, but... But, yeah, and I wish that it was mandatory for the Lister card, that we have telephone numbers.
Yeah, I found the same thing when I'm trying to find a, get in touch with a landowner and, you know, use the Lister records and his mailing address and sometimes you can call, get a phone number, but often these days they, they don't have a landline and there's no cell phone.
Yeah.
So, yeah, I'll be doing a big deposit tomorrow and then, um, see where I'm at and if I'm, because right now I have, in the checking, there's forty-seven thousand. So I'm sure, um, with just the deposit I took in and the more that I grabbed from the post office tonight, that I should have enough to do that, um, to eliminate that and get it to the smallest possibility of, of interest and get that out of here.
Yeah, agree.
So I'm just wondering, while you're right here, um, we could talk about, there's a couple things under the town highway report, whether it's some, some of the money things.
Yep.
So, um, Brandy had just mentioned that, um, we've scheduled a meeting with the Union Bank for this Wednesday, I think, at eleven AM to talk about, um, loan, loan financing for the bürmer and the mower attachment. So we'll need to talk more about that, whether we actually wanna do that. And then also for the financing of the replacement of the two thousand thirteen truck. I spoke with Sandy Ladd last week and have a, you know, just kind of confirmed the time.
Yes, I saw that updated quote with the trade-in, yeah.
Yeah, so, and let me just, so what we would do, um, with the truck, this is mostly for Brandy's knowledge, um, is that, um, and I have paperwork from him, you know, we would make a commitment soon, maybe, hopefully tonight. We would make a commitment on, um, purchasing the cabin chassis, a Freightliner cabin chassis through Charle Boys.
And this is for next fiscal year?
This is for next fiscal year.
It would arrive next summer.
We'll make a commitment now, because we've been told that in order to get a truck ready for, not this winter, but the following winter, you sort of need to make a commitment as soon as possible because it takes over a year or more to get it, to get it put together. So we would just say, yes, we intend to purchase cabin chassis, um, from Charle Boys. And the, the price that they've given us is a hundred and twenty-one thousand dollars. Um, and they're giving us sixty thousand dollars trade-in for the two thousand thirteen.
So the one twenty is with the body, everything?
No, that's just cabin chassis.
Cabin chassis.
The bo, the body and the plows is another seventy-one thousand dollars.
Oh, wow.
Which we don't need to deal with right now.
No, no. So, um, we would make the, an intended commitment now, um, and then next summer, um, when the cabin chassis comes in, if we have the loan set for them, um, if we pay for it when it comes in, we don't, you know, if we pay for it when it comes in, we don't accrue interest on them having it on their lot, they would have paid for it and then they're charging us interest. We, we can pay for it when it comes in, which is kind of right around that July first cash flow. So if we had the loan, you know, the cash flow issue wouldn't be a problem. And then we would defer paying for it until the fall. So that's what you need to see if the Union Bank is willing...
And I don't see a problem.
No, they, they allowed us to defer the...
Because the chassis ends up being sixty-six or seventy thousand dollars of the trade-in and then another seventy or so that we're gonna have to do for the plows and some body and sander.
So that's, that's one thing that we would be talking with the Union Bank about on Wednesday. And you guys are welcome to come too.
Yeah, I've got a meeting all day, unfortunately, because I only have one meeting this week and it's Wednesday.
Yeah, and then the other thing that we'll be talking with them about is, uh, financing the, what I call the bürmer and the mower attachment, and we'll talk more about that, um, this evening. By using, um, the amount that we spend yearly for, um...
Mowing.
Mowing, yeah, the rental mowing. It's basically nine, uh, forty-five hundred dollars a year. It's, um, we, we do a, one year, it's, this year was thirty-two hundred.
Thirty-two, yeah.
And so it was a little bit more than previous one-year time. And then the next year, we keep it for two weeks and it's six thousand, it might be sixty-four thousand is next year. So it's roughly forty-five hundred dollars a year.
That's the brush hog.
That's for both, that's for, yeah, for the brush hog that we rent from...
Now, this bürmer won't do the same thing as the brush hog, obviously.
No, we need, they're two different.
Totally different, yeah, so this bürmer's just gonna deal with the ditch. And any brush cutting is gonna be done with...
With, with this flail, this flail mower is capable of doing both the mowing and the brush cutting.
The tree cutting, yeah.
Yeah, and both of these tools are attachments that would go on the cab.
They're two tools that we gotta buy to replace the other, yeah.
Yeah, so, um, and so basically, we wouldn't be adding to the yearly budget doing this. We would just be designating what we spend in rental for the mower to make payments on, um, on those two pieces of equipment.
And we own them, so we could use them any time.
Whenever we wanted to, we could, we could take some money from the herd fund and, and make the payment, you know, put, uh, some money into that, if, if, that's something that we need to decide also, or we could just leave that money.
Would the goal be to have those things by the spring or...
Yes, the goal would be to have them by the spring. So that, that loan would be a little bit sooner, um, and it would depend on if the Union Bank is okay with those, you know, those terms. Um, so we would actually make the purchases this winter, um, and then, um...
I might give you the most recent quote I had.
Yeah, so I have seventeen thousand behind, yeah.
And they had delivered to you.
And, and the flail chopper, um, mower chopper is just about fifty thousand dollars when you round it off. So it's, it's a chunk of money.
So we have twenty-two, six in the herd fund now.
Yeah, and we may wanna keep that money there, I mean, that's something for us to figure out, we have time to figure that out.
Yeah.
But those are the two things that we would be discussing with the Union Bank. And I know, Brian, you mentioned at the last meeting, well, maybe we should see if another bank would give us a better deal. Um, I, you know, if you would like to research that, I'm, I'm fine with just asking that question, I think the thing that I...
Do you know what the percentage is there?
It's like, well, it varies, it's like two, one to five to two point five, somewhere in that area. And they, they're doing municipal lending in it, with the fire department, we always end up back there.
How you doing?
We have everything through them.
We have everything there too, so it just, it seems like we've found a bank.
Well, the municipal lending deal's pretty much the same everywhere, every bank that does it, that's the issue, correct.
So, and this is a known entity for us, all our accounts are there, so...
Just to save you some time, I've been down the road.
You guys have looked around.
Yeah, we couldn't do any better, we've dealt with leasing companies and I always end up right back at Union Bank.
It's usually where you have your main operating account is where they can offer you the best.
Yeah, because you're a known tool.
And we don't, yeah.
And we, you know, we had funded the other two ten-wheelers through Daimler, which is the big Mercedes-Benz, you know, they do a lot of financing of town equipment that way, but we actually got a better deal from the Union Bank. And we got less hassles.
Yeah, it was.
Yeah, we were getting lots of...
No, that's no problem, yeah.
So that's why we use the Union Bank for the local. So, yeah, so, um, while we're, I guess while we're doing that, you pull... So this is a, a form that I got from... And we're kind of skirting around the purchasing policy too a little bit with this, you know, we...
Going out to bid.
We aren't going out to bid, we have a...
Sole source purchasing.
Pretty, yeah, and we, you know, we have Charle Boys, they do all the maintenance work, they're the, they've been the best. I mean, when there's something broken down, they get on it, they fix it.
And there's not a lot of sources for this, anyway.
That's what I'm saying, you've got, there's, there's sole source usually.
Yeah, yeah.
They're kind of the only ones around, the big ones, they're close by, so, yeah.
So this is the paper, I only got one copy, but, um, this is the paperwork that Sandy sent.
I, I have it at home, so I've seen it, yeah.
Yeah, I did, I forwarded it to you guys, okay, so...
Yeah.
So we, you know what?
I did say that too, yeah.
Okay, so, um, I could make a motion that we commit to this, um, particular purchase?
Make away.
All right, so I, I would make a motion that we, um, sign, I'm gonna call it a, a letter of intent, um, because we can back out on this if we, if we want to, um, that we sign, um, this, uh, purchase, uh, intent agreement with Charle Boys, um, for the purchase of, uh, a Freightliner ten-wheeler replacement for the two thousand thirteen truck. And the purchase would be in the summer of two thousand twenty. We would sign the letter of intent now in order to get on their list to order trucks, so...
Viking's schedule.
Yeah.
Does that also get us to Viking, because Viking's the big one?
It gets us to Viking too, yeah, yeah. And it basically guarantees that we'll have a new ten-wheeler by the winter of two thousand twenty, twenty-one.
Got it.
Yeah.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So, um...
Viking's the big delay, they're, they're June, if you order today, you can't get in line to even get your stuff on till June because the chassis will take three months to arrive once they...
And there's work that gets done on the chassis once that arrives and then they send it on to Viking. Okay, um... Just as a question, Laura, have you heard anything about something happening in the South Woodbury Cemetery?
A car rolled over.
A car rolled over.
I didn't hear about it, someone showed me a picture of the record.
State police were up there one night.
We didn't go up, so it must be nobody was injured, somebody flipped a car, I saw a picture of it from the record driver.
I didn't hear, I drove up and looked and I see some marks up in there, yeah, so...
So nobody got called, so just the state police and the record driver went there.
Fly away. So this is eight twenty-six.
That was South Woodbury, so there's a scar up there on the dirt.
Okay, so I will...
You've had quite a few of those lately, you show up and ta-da, they're gone.
Had three wrecks in the last two weeks, nobody around.
I'll get this out to Sandy.
Disappear quick, I'm gonna have to.
Makes your job a little easier, but for us, not the state police. Crashing their bicycles, you know.
Then another issue for, further down the road is whether or not we wanna do an extended warranty.
Okay, we can resolve that.
Have we normally done the extended warranties on them?
I think we have, but I'm not positive, so I guess...
Okay, so the next question was, have we had to use our extended warranties in the past or not?
Yeah, we've had a five-year warranty, I know that for the trucks, and it did come handy.
Yeah.
And whether that, I think that's, I think that is an extended warranty, but I, I don't know the answer a hundred percent for that. So, that grade, so I'll ask him then.
Yeah.
I think, what did Sandy say would be an extra? Like, I can't remember what he said, I didn't write it down unfortunately. Is there another, you just check, might be in here.
That's a biggie, do we get over the mileage, so it's gonna be an issue, or do we not? That's the biggie. Do we get over the mileage, so it's gonna be an issue, or do we not get the mileage factor or, what, the year factor?
He said a good budget, budget number for up to eighty-four months of coverage, which is, let's see, that's seven years actually. Would be fifteen thousand dollars. So I probably, then my assumption is, is that it comes with a five-year warranty.
And you're bumping it up.
Yeah, and they'll bump it up another two years.
And we've been keeping them eight years?
Seven to eight years.
This will be a seven-year replacement cycle. And then the two thousand fourteen, we're gonna try to stretch it out a little bit longer.
We gotta separate.
Get them separated. So we do one now and do, wait a few years for the other one. They'll be three, four, five years.
Then we'll be gentle on the other one for a while.
Really easy on it, yeah.
Let that one sit in the garage a little bit more. Okay, we'll get this back to Sandy by the Charleboy. And we'll have a truck in line to arrive. So, let's see, I think that was pretty much those two things.
What, did you bring in the binder for the, the?
Yes.
Grants and aid that I can scan and send, whatever we need to do to get this?
I took, I took care of that today. I was, I had a meeting at the Regional Planning Commission, so I gave Dan the timesheets. This is the file. And again, I apologize for my confusion about where that thing was, but especially after I found it right on my desk.
Don't do that again. It's freaking out just a little bit, right?
What?
And I have more paperwork for you with the school roof, but I'll, I'll wait and bring that into you on-
Wednesday?
Wednesday.
Okay. Other questions?
Good, yeah, good.
Was this discussed already?
Yes, we have approved ours.
Okay, because, yeah, I was, they, they, yeah, planning on attending them, so. All righty. Good, good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so Diana's not here tonight. So the town highway report, she did just send a brief little note that, um, and I, I think you guys are aware of this already, but, the Leahy, Sanders, and Welch, their offices kind of teamed together and sent a joint letter to FEMA encouraging them to, um, get their-
Act together because it's gonna snow here in two weeks.
Right, so, and they did send a letter. The letter has been sent to FEMA in the Boston office and so we'll see.
We'll see. This is pretty, pretty.
Yeah.
So I guess my question is, is there any way we can do it prior to that?
No.
We just don't own it yet, so we still can't.
Nothing we can do, so.
We can touch, yeah. I just, Larry Rossi was down last week. Ronnie was out there and he stopped in. And he was looking over at the barn. He says, you realize that roofing is worth money? He said, I have a contractor from Stowe looking for old rusty roofing.
Right, they wanna use it for stuff.
They wanna use it for stuff up there.
So up there and peel it off before they tear it down.
Yep, he said, yep. He says it's crazy, yeah.
Seems like, you know, when the, when the demolition happens, if there are-
We could do any of that if we wanted to.
We could separate. I mean, it might-
I think the contract said that any of the materials would be on the property.
They probably own it all.
Yeah, okay.
That's fine, well.
That's fine, yeah. That's part of the-
Have to get it off before we sign the contract. Do we have a contract with?
We have a contract.
Oh, the contract is with that one company.
So we've already signed it.
If we don't lose everything, FEMA would keep dragging that fee.
Right, yeah, yeah. Yeah, so, so that's that for, so, um, let's see, onto the town highway report. We talked, I probably should've taken the first item off the agenda, but we did talk about that a bit, um, at our last meeting.
Yeah, how we're gonna, and that's for budgeting time anyway. We'll have us work on that.
Truck replacement, we just, um,
Did that.
Just did that. So, um, the burmer and the mower attachment purchases, I mean, I think we should, you know, make sure that we're, that we're all okay in making these purchases. The road crew, Greg, Greg and Greg did visit the Brandon, um, road crew last week. And they had quite a bit of time to ask questions and get, uh, feedback from the, the road crew, especially the crew members that use that piece of equipment and, and got, you know, very good, you know, glowing reports of its effectiveness both for mowing and brush cutting. They didn't get actually, they didn't get to play with it.
Didn't let them take them out for a free ride, doing some free time.
Apparently it was out somewhere.
Is that the one that goes on the grader? Goes on the loader?
Loader, yeah. Actually, both of these are gonna go on the loader.
Both of these go on the, on the cat loader.
Okay.
The burmer is made, it's not made by cat, but it's made especially for cat to go along.
It's got the cat attachment.
And the same is true of this mower attachment. It's not made by cat, um, but it is, it's made specifically to work.
I would hope that if we do get it, it looks like we probably will, that they keep a special sheet over there so we can track their hours they use it.
That's the same thing that's important to me, because here's the issue I'm concerned with, is they've only got so much hours.
Right.
So we're gonna need to, it, it's important to me that those items get used, you know, and that the problems get addressed. And then use them every year to keep it addressed. So how, I guess moving forward, we'll have to work with Greg on.
Right.
Being sure, because one concern I have and maybe something we want to look at is we've got a chipper over there that's been sitting for-
We could get-
Two years. I'm wondering if we shouldn't sell the thing and use that money to offset.
Something else.
Something you could talk to. I mean, they haven't touched it for two years.
It gets used very minimally.
Right. So, so here's my theory with this, is that, you know, when, if you've got the road crew out shipping, for instance, then they can't do, they're not doing road movements at the time, right?
Or, or one, you know, one person could be doing-
You see them going with it. We're gonna have the same problems with this brush cutter or the burmer. We've got to make sure that hours are set aside.
They gotta use them.
Yeah, because, you know, he's telling me the spring is when you can do this.
That's when Alan Labb told him that that tends to get used the most when the ground's still fairly soft.
Because my plan is this is gonna resolve our berm, big berm problem. And so I just don't want to hear after we buy this and I'm getting shot at because we spent so much money and it's sitting at the town bridge next to the chipper. Yeah. That's a concern. You, it sounds like, I just want to make sure. So we need to, you know, maybe set some of our part-time people aside specifically for doing that.
Yeah.
But yeah, that's it.
That makes sense. No rock thrown. It's just, we gotta make sure that when those items arrive, they're working them.
And the burmer pretty much has to be used in conjunction with the grader because the grader's gonna be dealing with what the burmer is pulling.
Fellow I talked to says a lot of times you gotta pull that stuff in, let it dry, and then go back and grade it.
Yeah.
So not be able to do it that day because it's gotta, a lot of the time it's gonna be chunky, muddy.
So you gotta do something with it or else people will be driving over it.
Well, it'll, it chumps it up, but you, but he says you don't regrade the road for a couple days. Again, I'm going by what I was told. They do it, but again, some of our roads are really behind, so it's probably gonna be a learning curve and a-
Yeah, there will be a learning curve.
Yeah. But a serious question was, should we look at selling that chipper?
I'll ask Greg.
I don't want to do the top-down thing. You need to go sell your chipper, but on the other hand, they're not using the chipper and we're gonna have this.
Yeah.
Because to me, if we need a tree cutting crew, just hire a tree cutting crew.
Yeah, we get to that point where, yeah, we've got a small crew and maybe it is time where we started hiring subcontractors to go in and either-
For example, yeah.
Or, yeah.
Yeah, that's where I was headed with that little speech, because, you know, those guys are, I, I know the bunch of trees fell on my neighbor's power line. They had people come in there and two hours, they cleared that whole thing. But that's what they do.
Yeah.
So it's something we, that's, that's just important to me.
We used to do that years ago. We kind of got out of it. Probably along towards Harry's term, when they started wanting to do that themselves.
Well, that's when the, I think the brush cutter or the, the chipper came along. It was used. It was a good deal. And I know it was bought during, during Harry's time.
And they used it initially, but now it doesn't use it.
Because I think these, like you said, would be used with, in conjunction with the grader, so that we should make sure we're assigning.
Appropriate time for both of them to do it.
Because what I don't want to hear is there's berms and, and so we only use it two weeks a year and then that's all we got to do. We should have no berms.
And the mowing, you know, the mowing could be done anytime.
Right, anytime it's needed, you'd get out there and mow.
Greg is, I mean, that's one of the things that Greg is really interested in is that, you know, we do get calls, uh, the wild treble that's on the side or, you know, could you mow that before it goes to seed? And usually by the time-
Where it's already gone, seed, and then you get the thing there.
So we're just spreading it even more.
So that's, that's what I thought. I thought I'd take a serious look at it because if you can sell that chipper, that'll offset.
Yeah, that'll be a little bit.
There's no point in having to sit there.
And if he is interested in selling it, and we can do some research, see what it's worth.
Right, yeah.
He'd probably look up online and see what they're selling for, or even post it on one of those sites online.
Sounds like this cutter would do the job, what they need to do. If we need to, again, my opinion, if we need to go do some major cutting, we should just hire some, a tree cutting team to just come in.
Which is what we have. And when there's some major tree cutting to be done and it's kind of beyond the scope of road crew, we have around.
That's just my thought, because looking at their hours, like, well, your hours are better spent on the grader.
Right.
It's greater getting this stuff done.
Yeah, yeah, we're spread really thin.
And somebody on that thing, we buy these tools, get something they need to be out there.
Now, we're looking at, what, ten thousand gallon fuel tank? Is that what we're talking about, above ground or something? What was it?
No, we'll, we'll get to that. We can talk about it right now if you want.
Because that covers us. I'm not in favor of moving forward with those things. We can do it in our budget.
Yeah, I think we can.
Be sensitive so we don't have a big jump in our taxes next year.
And we'll get an answer to, we'll have an answer to that on Wednesday. And then the thing, you know, thinking forward, do we want to spend some of that HERF money towards this just to make the overall payment less? Or do we want to just spread it out? It would take, you know, if it's forty-five hundred dollars a year and we're spending, let's see, sixty-seven thousand dollars for the two pieces of equipment and the interest rate, of course.
Yeah.
It'll be probably a fifteen-year kind of term that we would be-
I'd be in favor of using someone else.
Yeah, I would want to get that term down to like five years.
Five years, okay.
We see, I mean, I know that's a short term.
It's gonna start breaking after.
Right.
Yeah.
That's my thought. I mean, I guess, see what she'll do for us, but we gotta get in that budget number.
Well, what, what I'll do is, um, I'll give her, we'll, we'll kind of ask for, um, five-year, ten-year, um, terms. And, um, and then what would the yearly payment be?
Yeah, because we gotta kind of fit it into what we're paying now.
So we got twenty-two six in the highway coverage reserve fund.
Yeah. So you, it may be that, um, that maybe it would be more than forty-five hundred dollars a year, but if it was only, it was-
But that might be okay.
If it was a little bit more, like-
I just worry about the really long terms if we pay a ton of interest in that.
Yeah, yeah, the longer you go.
So if we could take some of that money and, you know, get that term down to five, seven, eight years. Now it's, and, uh, because I do think there'll be a productivity gain. That's what I want. I'm gonna make sure we have a productivity gain on it.
That's the whole purpose of doing this. Yeah. So for the, um, okay, so I'll, I'll get terms and, so we can make a, you know, we'll make a decision on that at the next legislature meeting, what, what kind of, how long?
Yeah, so if the numbers work out, so we can, we do have some money, we can put down on it.
Next, there's twenty-two thousand in there. We might as well.
What's it cost? Fifty, forty-five?
Yeah, the berm, the edger's like seventeen-five and the other one's forty-something, right?
So, um, do you want to move on to the underground storage?
Sure.
Okay, um, so there's, we still don't have quite all of the answers. We obviously, you know, we want to, we want to get the, get it out of the ground. So that's what we're, we're working on. In terms of the, um, there is a zero percent loan that we can go for. And see what's in it.
Zero percent loan to remove it?
Remove the old thing.
Yeah, there's, I, so I called Sullivan Powers. I spoke with Steve Sullivan. And where are my notes on that?
One of the reasons I asked, I was up to the town of Stowe last week and did an estimate on all of their vehicles. And they have a ten-thousand gallon above-ground tank sitting beside the building.
Right.
And it's impressive. It's the double wall.
It's big, yeah.
It is massive, you know, catwalk and whoever the company was, they buy their fuel phone, put it in for free.
Yeah. I suspect we'll get the tank put in for free.
Yeah, I didn't remember how much we were looking though to put in for storage.
We, right now, we have a thousand gallon tank and, um,
I know whoever-
Gillespie Fuels has a used two thousand gallon tank. They would be willing to sell us for about a thousand dollars. A new thousand gallon tank would be about two thousand dollars.
So we go with two thousand for a thousand, and it's a double-walled, above-ground, yeah.
And it doesn't need a cement pad as long, it, you have, wouldn't need a gravel surface.
Yeah.
But Greg is thinking, you know, that we could use the underground storage tank as the above-ground storage tank.
Because you'd have to put it in a containment area.
Right, it'd have to be in like a septic tank kind of containment.
And if we've got somebody that's willing to give us a tank.
Our, our office does the permitting. And so as long as it's a double-wall tank, you only want to have your, your fueling area dish so that if they overflow the truck, it's not running down in the road. But you definitely want the double-wall tank.
Yeah.
And then you gotta put up some bollards and things so people aren't running into the thing.
Yeah.
And then to remove the old tank, um, see, Steve also filled me on that. I'm trying to find the notes that I wrote for that.
I usually lose my notes.
Yeah, well, I do too, obviously, as you can see right now. I put those lights on the left-hand panel. I wrote them down.
I was falling asleep here. I could let it turn on now.
Yeah.
Okay, yeah.
Yeah, I can remember Harry had, whoever he had talked to would give us a tank as well, but I don't remember.
Right, I remember, I remember that. So, um, that's to re, that's to repair it. Okay, so that's to repair the tank.
Yeah, we don't want to repair it. We want to get it out, get it over.
Underground tank business.
Okay, well, I can, I think I can remember it well enough because I know I wrote it down and I know I put it in this file, but.
So we still got time, as long as we get it done this fall.
So I would like to move forward with whatever we got to do.
Whatever we gotta do to get that out of the ground.
Get the tank out, get the new tank in and-
So, um, with the, the loan would basically pay our costs in removing the old, the old tank. Because what happens is, um, they have to do a, a site visit excavation thing for the, you know, to make sure that there's no contaminants or whatever. And then-
Can we do the digging?
I think we can do the, Greg says we can do the digging.
Yeah, I don't see any problem with us doing that. So they just gotta come look at the soil.
We'd have to pay, it's about, I think the Steve Gillespie said it was about twelve fifty for someone to come and kind of oversee the digging, the digging of it.
So he'd stand there while they did it.
Well, make sure that there's no-
No contaminants, yeah. And then, um, what happens to happen is you have to clean the inside of the tank and that costs about two thousand dollars.
Can you? If somebody wants to buy the tank? That's only if you're decommissioning it to get rid of it.
It's a double-wall tank.
They're probably not gonna want to buy a tank that has a failed, um,
Right.
But we, let's put it to trial.
If anybody's gonna leave it above ground, you know, even in a building, you know, vented, you know, there, it's gonna be, it's a double-walled tank. I don't see why it has to be destroyed.
Yeah, I can ask that question.
Is the one that's buried double-wall?
Yes.
It's a single-wall, okay. But it's an underground tank. It's not an above-ground tank. They're different animals.
Yeah, they are different.
Because if they were using it on a non-regulated site, somebody could do that.
It has the stuff so you can test it between them. So I don't think it's electronic. It's, they just stick it?
Yeah.
Because a lot of them are electronic, right?
A lot of them are electronic, yeah. And that's, the whole electronic thing is to help, um, there's a whole, where the cathodes are always active and it's supposed to, you know, keep the tank from corroding.
Yeah, so with a double-walled tank, if it's, yeah, there's nothing wrong with the inside. There could be somebody around, is that thousand gallon?
Yeah, that's what I was saying.
So maybe a contractor around it, like they want in a shop or something. They'd give us some for it rather than paying to get rid of it.
My impression of talking with Steve Gillespie is that they wouldn't, there would be some costs involved, um, in them coming to, to install a new tank. There would be a cost for the tank. I mean, they, their, their reason for that is that, um, you know, we put the fuel bit out now for bid every, every year, so.
What if we agreed to give them five years of fuel business?
That would be the good question to ask, because I, this is a pain, having to go out to bid every year when you've got a solid company.
You can offset the costs if they say, we'll put the tank in for nothing for five years worth of fuel.
And what's happening with the bidding is that Gillespie is the only company that really handles all of our fuel needs, the propane, diesel.
Yeah.
So you could always throw that out. They're willing to tell them, because I think that's a fair deal.
Yeah, okay. Well, I think they would be willing to do it then.
Yeah.
It doesn't cost you anything.
Yeah, and they guess, yeah, they set it up.
We can check with our auditors to get their blessing, I suppose.
Yeah, because that just makes more sense.
It does.
We tried to do a three-year, you know, just to save the town, the effort, um, and then we realized that, you know, nobody knows what the price of fuel is gonna be.
Right, they're not gonna go that far, yeah. They don't even like to go a year. Some years are so volatile, they're losing their shirt or you're paying too much.
Yeah. Yeah, so you get them in the right time where they can pre-buy it, yeah, then you're-
Yeah. So I'll do some more, and I've been trying to- So I'll do some more, and I've been trying to get ahold of this, the fellow from the state who oversees the underground storage tanks, and I just, I have spoken with him. You know, he did, spoken with him enough to get the information about the loan for removing the old tank. But I'm trying to get him to answer some of these questions too, and he hasn't called me back.
Yeah, I said, we get it out, and it's not showing any signs of holes or leaks, why can't we just sell this?
Yeah, I'll, I'll ask him that if it.
Does it all have to empty it?
Because there's a ton of contractors around here that might want a double-wall, if they've got the old single walls in their yards.
So we would want to get a new above-ground tank or.
Or their used one.
Or their used one.
Maybe if they're doing it for free, if they agree to that deal, put in whatever they want.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And then let them deal with the permitting.
About the same price, and it might be easier to, be less delivery times, it might, it might actually.
Yeah, they may even kick it up as far as the amount of fuel in there, so they don't have to come as often.
The 2,000 double-wall, as long as it's not rusty and it's still serviceable.
Yeah. Okay. And then put it in place, yeah. And maybe they could coordinate some of that work with the road crew. Okay, so I'll get some more answers to those questions, hopefully, and we can, we can make a decision on that. I have, this fellow Ted Uncles does, he does now know that we are not going to repair the tank, that we're planning on replacing it. He knows that we're actively figuring that out, so we're, we're good as far as the 30-day. The 30-day requirement was just to let them know what our, what we intend to do, so he knows that we're working on actively getting a new above-ground tank, so we don't have to worry about any, any reprimand from the state about that.
That tank up there must be 40 feet long. It just, it's a, it's huge.
Long skinny thing.
And it's, it's tall, it's got to be.
Yeah.
It's got to stand 12 foot high there, but yeah, it's.
That, that's the, that's the larger one that you're talking about?
Yeah.
Oh, it's huge, yeah, they got a big one, yeah.
Yeah, and they got a door you can get inside of the tank, so it's got, yeah.
Well, those notes are probably on a piece of paper up on my table, by the computer. I may have them all. Oh, well, anyway, my memory worked well enough, I think, so. So the Buck Lake Brook Cavit Road Repair, there's a mandatory site visit this Wednesday morning. We have four contractors that are involved. Two were recommended by Shawna Clifford from V-Trans, and then two others are local. One is Paul Lamberty, who put in the box culvert on Nelson Pond Road.
Four years.
Four or five years ago. The other is Gravel Construction, who, they have come initially and looked at the site with Greg. The other is.
Said Wednesday, right, 8:00 AM?
Yeah, Wednesday at 8:00 AM.
Site visit.
We'll have, Shawna will be there, and the Logan Perrin is the guy's name from, okay, where is that?
And you said from the site's visit time, a couple of weeks to bids or something, or do we?
Yeah, the, the date, I think it was, so, see, this will be August, I think it's.
It's the 28th of Wednesday.
Early in September that the bids have to be in. 20th of September is the, is the site visit. How can I lose a whole file?
Better than I am.
A couple of weeks for bids, okay, so that's good. Yeah, so maybe we've still got a shot at getting this done this year.
Yeah, yeah, we do. That's, the intention is to get it done this year, we may not actually get to the paving.
Yeah, that's one paving.
It's going to be hard to get somebody to come and pave it.
Yeah, unless one of these guys actually does paving.
You might be able to hook it into the village thing next spring with the paving.
Yeah.
Everybody laughs at me.
Yeah, so I think that, that would be the thinking, is to try to hook it into what we have happening in the village.
We'll talk about that when we get to that on the list.
Huh, that's weird, I don't have that. Well, anyway, that I can, I've got that in my head anyway, so, yeah, so the fellow has written up Logan Perrin, wrote up an RFP for this project, and he also developed, he's a technician with V-Trans, he developed what's called a cross-section.
Yeah, I think you sent that to us.
Yeah, I sent that to you guys.
Yeah.
Two, two different plans, and the contractors have received that, so they'll, they'll have that information.
It's not a huge job.
It's not a huge job, yeah.
These guys can get rid of it and bust it out.
Yeah, so, so, you know, they'll come, we'll get it, we'll get the bids back in a couple of weeks, we'll make a decision. And, and then we'll kind of, hopefully, we'll, you know, have a timeframe from them. Maybe, I think that might be a part of the, in the RFP, it says that the work needs to be done before November 1st. So whether they'll be able to do that.
Probably have a late winter.
Yeah, like last year.
Yeah.
We're right up to our eyeballs in winter by the field.
Yeah, we didn't, didn't go away.
We didn't really get much of a fall. Went from hot to it was snowing.
So good, so I'll be up there too as well, so.
I won't, I'm going to be in a meeting.
Okay, yeah, so the other thing, in talking with Shawna, is that another, and you know, this, this, it's the emergency grant that we have that's going to pay for this project, so should be, you know, we'll see what the bids come in as.
Because she's giving us a figure.
Yeah, $150,000 is the total for the grant, there's a 10% match from the town, so technically, V-Trans will be giving us $135,000, and then $15,000 is our match. And, you know, if the project doesn't come to that, then we can, if we choose, we can use the grant to reimburse for a couple of the, there were a couple culverts that couldn't handle the water flow on county roads, so there was, the road washed out, so we could use that to reimburse the town for that.
So we're not going to get the straight 150, if the bid comes in at 135.
Right, if the bids come in lower, there is, we can use, we can use, we, that's our upper limit. We can use that money to reimburse the town.
So we can fill it in if we do, yeah.
Yeah.
Or we could just eat the money, you know, we've already spent that money to fix the roads, and then our, then our 10% match would be less. So that would be, because we'll look at the numbers and figure out which would be the best benefit to the town for them. Because those repairs have been done, and it's too bad that, you know, the April flooding, we put in a fairly, a new fairly expensive culvert for the culvert that basically just got washed into a wetland area.
Yeah.
Bigger capacity, but that was in April, not in May, so we can only use this for things that happen.
On that storm.
May 24th, yeah. So. So we should have, we should have a contractor chosen, and I think that our next slipboard being the bids might be in the.
Good. Might be back on somewhat of a schedule, and get that taken care of.
Well, at least we'll have a schedule that we know of, that we can assume we know of. So the Old Corey, and so the Old Corey Road, another thing that I talked with Shawna about is that, you know, another part of our costs in doing this project would be to pay for.
Gravel or whatever.
Flagging, you know.
Oh, yeah.
That was part of the bid proposal, I think, wasn't it?
Yeah, it was in there. She, you know, then I mentioned, well, we have talked about just closing the road and using another road, which is, would be the Old Corey Road, so we could save some expense if we do that, if we just set up a detour, make sure that road is travelable.
And I think in the end, we're going to have to.
Yeah, depending on that cost too, though, I don't know.
Right, yeah, yeah. I drove up the Old Corey Road just because I had the meaning to get there, it's drivable up.
I don't think you had to do any work to it, do it?
Well, depending on which entryway onto the Cavit Road we use.
Yeah, right, if one of them's blocked.
Yeah, the, the.
It's been unblocked.
The old road is, it's just a short section. It is a little bit steeper getting onto the Cavit Road, I mean, it definitely, the, the new entryway is much safer and easier.
I just say, leave it be, use it, use what's there right now. If we have to, road crew can go up in a day.
Right, they could.
It's going to cost a lot of money, yeah.
They could put some gravel in and probably cut some, the trees have kind of grown in a bit.
Yeah, so it'd be pretty.
So we do, we do have a.
But like Paul said, use it, it's our road, use it, keep using it.
Yeah, it's what happens.
Can make him try to prove that it isn't.
Because that's part of that same conversation, I think, we just have the attorney send a letter stating our intention that that's ours.
Yeah, yeah. And we should have a better sense with the bids on just a timeframe on how long they think that they would be working there. So that'll give us a sense of how, you know, if we were to close the road.
Yeah, whether they're going to be there three days, you know, I don't, none of us know what it's going to take them to do that, but.
But they'll, they should have a pretty good.
Yeah, they'll have a good idea, yeah.
A week, you know.
How much of the road they're going to have to cut out to do that, and if any, yeah, really, I'd say, if they don't have to cut the road out of it.
Better if they didn't.
Yeah, I know when.
Off there forever.
When the, when gravel came with, you know, when Greg, Greg called them, just had them come and take a look at it, they did say, you know, probably, you know, we would have to cut away some of the way. But.
Probably just to cover their own butts, you know, just in case.
There's only four and a half, there's quite a bit of pavement there, at least three, two and a half inch base.
It's four and a half inches, yeah.
Two inch.
Yeah, and well, it's too bad, you know, because, because that's pretty new, and you know, if we have to cut it away and patch it, you know, the patch is always going to be.
We see in Barry, they just did the big dig, did the whole intersection, and they had to dig that thing all up because the water lane break. Nice move, eh, but.
So that, that road will be definitely optimized.
Yeah.
I was hoping it'd be quite a few years before we have to repave that.
Yeah.
Okay, so we'll, yeah, we'll have a better sense of whether we'll be using the Old Corey Road as a detour.
Yeah.
But I assume that we probably will.
Yeah, I think there's a good, better than good shot of it, just so they can do it as quick as possible.
Yeah. I mean, just hearing the road crew talk about trying to work on the county road, you know, there's just so much traffic.
Yeah, that Greenwood and County gets a ton of traffic.
Yeah, you know, they'll just be getting started, and then a car shows up, so they'll kind of quickly do what they're doing and then get out of the way, and then, and they do close off, when they had to, to basically ditch all the way across the road, we'd close the road for half a day, and so it was so much easier to do the work.
It's got to be, yeah.
So, and people, you know, there is a lot of traffic on county road, and people just don't want to wait.
Yeah.
Anyway, so closing it would probably be the best bet. So the village paving.
Village paving, I'm going to recommend we hold.
Okay.
Because looking at timeframes, everybody's just laughing at me, they're going to be, realistically, you need to put a November 1st timeframe on there, you're not going to ward till almost October, nobody's going to jump on it.
Would anybody want to give us a bid this year, or they all want to wait till?
Yeah, nobody wants to.
I think the fluctuation in the.
Because of petroleum prices.
Yeah.
So the recommendation I'm making is that we put it out to bid in March.
Okay.
That's what the, that's what everyone's telling me, get it in early, and we maybe potentially will look at doing that little strip of the, of Valley Lake Road potentially, too.
I think if we do that, we would do both of those pieces, you know, I don't know.
It makes sense.
The timeframe for those erosion things, you know, there's still.
And this doesn't mutually exclusive, so if we even plan to pave that just past the annex right to the school entrance.
Yeah.
That still could be done, we're going to have to lower, there's going to be work that needs to be done, but.
Yeah.
Think they'll get to that this fall, or?
I wish they would, but I don't know.
They're going to, they're, they do intend to lower the road in front of the annex to try to relieve the flooding, that's, that's, you know, they're aware of that.
Try to have them contact me so I can be there when they do that, just so I can.
Yeah, and then as far as.
So you can say, go deeper.
Yeah, well, because even looking, when I talked to Norman from the, from Pike, that comes off the pavement now, and it comes up by the old store, so he's saying, realistically, to pave that, they're going to have to, either that, or you're going to have to bring that whole approach up to Route 14 and even get into, so he's, he's recommending dig that road back down to the level of pavement, and then go all the way through and then become, you know, so I'm not a.
Right.
But he says it's too high.
Rumbles can have to get to the point, if it keeps going this way, to jack up your building.
Something.
Yeah.
Well, if you get the, but see, the good part of that is all the material that's there is reusable, you're not out any material that can all be just.
Because it was low, it just, it's just gravel.
Yeah, it's just gravel and stuff, so it all can be just stockpiled and reused somewhere.
Yeah.
So you're, but it's a whole project, you're going to have to re-contour the road, dig the ditches down a little more, and get it back to where it used to be. And that's what even Norman said, because he looked at it, and he said, well, maybe Pike might be interested if that little bit extra has enough tonnage. I calculated the tonnage.
Yeah, and then if we had that little patch job on the Cavit.
But I, I think, you know, we're spinning our wheels, I think, setting this thing out, and this, I got to look at the 14.
It's delayed now, yeah.
You're unlikely to get a bid, or you're going to be unhappy, because you, you're going to get somebody that isn't qualified or doesn't really want to do it, or tries to hammer it in, and, you know, you might get it done in November, or if it's like last year, you're not.
Right.
A lot of pavement didn't get done last year because of what happened. So I think we're just better off, we're going to get a better price, and we might be able to connect even the Cavit Road if there's a spot that needs some patching.
Yeah, try to do that all in one shot.
But the, it's written, so all I got to do is put the dates on it.
Yeah, just have to keep it in our, our memory log.
It's right there in my file on my computer.
Okay, yeah, so just.
Unfortunately, I wanted to get it, it's a mess, so we're probably going to have a mess out there, but.
Well, we could try to think of some kind of, you know, winter over temporary, you know, patch that would make.
Yeah.
Things not so.
Make sure we stay mad, I'm just worried that those holes will get muddy and nasty, but.
Yeah, yeah, so try to, I would definitely try to do some kind of temporary patchwork before.
Could you, can they go buy some pavement to drop in the hole?
You can buy either cold mix or a hot mix.
Buy hot mix.
Yeah.
Is it just one or two good-sized holes?
Two or three big holes, we'd have to dig out, and I guess if it's just temporary, we'd just have them just put it in there and roll it down, or use a, a plate compactor or something. You'd have to do it in a couple lifts, you know.
Yeah, but catch with the patching is that, you know, then when you're washing the truck, there's water that will get down underneath, it freezes, and, you know, that's.
Well, because the, the dynamic in the parking lot is, the, in the wintertime, the salt, and it gets just hot, cold, and wet.
Yeah.
So what I noticed with the holes last year, is they just got, they would thaw, and they would just turn into giant moshes.
Yeah. You know, I don't know if we.
It's not really anybody's fault, it's just how it's kind of.
What happens, yeah.
It's just, the flood killed it, and it's just kind of been eating it up.
Yeah.
And then Norman from Pike did look at it, he said, that pavement, oh, there's at least two or three shimcoats, he said, that really all needs to come out of there.
Yeah.
Put a nice, good one on there, yeah.
You know, what the proposal calls for, two and a half inch base, and then an inch and a half, where to go.
Yeah, that would be a good, a good solid base.
That would stay.
Yeah, so, you know, really, really, we're, and again, it's another thing the road department would have to do, can their guys get it, they've got their hands full with getting roads caught up here, and now they're going to have to switch to pulling the pavement up and doing rough grading, and then the contractors, and this is responsible for final grading.
Like I said, we've got other contractors in town, you know, Shark is around, maybe his excavator.
But again, I don't, the problem now is getting, getting the pavement.
Yeah, it's too late now.
Yeah, so I think, but for the spring, we may seriously need to look at that, just because they're going to be right up to their eyeballs.
They're going to be busy with their stuff.
Spring road maintenance and.
Yeah, and we do wait for them.
Timing would have to be so bad, Lake Road is dry.
Yeah.
Yeah, so we may look at subbing that up to somebody else.
Could be, it's just a matter of moving the pavement.
Yeah.
Yeah, lowering Valley Lake Road.
Don't want to do it that way, but I just, realistically, I think that's the best course of action.
Yeah.
Everyone will want to keep doing it, putting Band-Aids on it.
Right.
Try to fix it right, get 20 years out of it, so that's two.
I think we do this, it'll, they're doing that, that would do that whole apron, all across the front and down the side, and then we decide to do, I think it makes sense to do Valley Lake Road, if we can do it within our budget.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Just found my notes, I put them in my folder here, and I don't, so.
Get them to put some pavement in the bottom of that ice skating rink out there, so we don't have to buy plastic every year to put in there. Make a nice little.
They use the thing.
Yeah.
It's pretty good, people there, it's pretty popular.
Yeah, school kids out there.
Wait for a nice frozen day, and we go out there and fill it up with water.
Yeah, yeah, I was up on my roof shoveling last winter, and I could, man, a lot of people use that skating rink over there. Because I saw you over there one day.
I, once a week, I do the snow show, and it seems like the morning, the morning that I do it, it always seems to snow.
You had a big snowfall, right? In my day, it didn't snow.
Yeah.
Yeah, so, yeah, it's great that it does get.
Yeah, it's fair amount of use, like to see it double the size.
Yeah, it'd be nice, yeah.
Down the road sometime.
So just kind of backtracking, because I did find another, I was looking for, um, so the other two contractors are Kirk Fenoff and Son, they're based up in Danville. And, and then Matthews Excavating, a fellow named Darryl Matthews. And then the other two are Gravel Construction and Paul and Burley, so those are the four.
Well, that's good, it's a nice mix then.
Yeah.
People, so.
Yeah, and the two, the two over Saint Jeway were recommended by Sean Clifford.
Yeah.
They've done work, other work and totally capable.
Yeah, and Burley did a good job for us, so we can recommend him as well. So, yeah, I think we've got a good mix of people that can do the job.
Yeah.
We should have a good job of somebody needing it.
Yeah, I mean, they were all, they all knew that it needed to be done before the winter and they were still interested and.
Yeah.
So, and then backtracking again on the underground storage tank, I was pretty close to my, so a new double wall tank would cost twenty eight hundred dollars. And Gillespie does have a two thousand, used two thousand gallon tank that they will be willing to sell for a thousand dollars.
Okay.
So, um.
Now, I was thinking, when Harry was looking, I don't know who he was looking with, but whoever he was looking at would have given us the tank.
Right, and then.
Well, that's why I think if we offer these guys a, because they, you know, they're.
Along the contract.
Gillespie said that they could supply the tank, but we would have to buy, we would have to make a commitment of buying the fuel from them in the future.
Did they say how many years or whatever?
Well, that's what we can ask of them.
Yeah, I mean, basically if.
Yeah, because they've treated us right, I got no problems dealing with those guys and if we can commit to.
Plus, if you're talking a few cents a gallon over a number of years, if you save, because it's just, that's not, you gotta pay for the tank, you gotta place the tank, you gotta pipe the tank, put a pump on it, you gotta. Put bollards up, you gotta have an electrician come wire the pump, there's a lot more costs.
Yeah.
So if they take all that and it's five or six, eight thousand bucks, which realistically, I think it could be.
Yeah.
And we don't have to pay that, then if you pay a little bit.
We can buy from them.
Potentially, they're not, they're not killing us on the fuel now, I doubt they're gonna do it.
Yeah, I think they're a good company, so, yeah, find out what the, what they would want for a term on it and.
Okay, all right, I can, I wrote that down, so, and then to remove the old tank, like I mentioned, there would have to be a site assessment and kind of an overseeing of the actual.
Actually dig it out.
Be a thousand to twelve hundred dollars.
That's for the state to do that or you have to?
They would, they would subcontract some kind of environmental, they would, they had a couple names.
So Gillespie would pull the old tank out of the ground for us?
We.
Or we could.
They were responsible for that.
Yeah, we could do that.
I think we have Greg dig it up, we hire the guy to come do the site and we set it aside.
Pull it out.
We can then determine whether we're gonna clean it or, we may need Gillespie to finish pumping the fuel out or we need to use all the fuel.
Yeah, you have to, you have to get the fuel out, obviously, yeah, yeah, so whether we just try to use it up or, or have them come and remove the fuel.
So then, in the meantime, the boys should have to, should start buying the fuel out to M and M or something?
Well, we, either we should have the above ground storage tank in place and full.
What would work good is if we can find a location to put it.
Right.
And have them put it in.
Have it in place, filled, ready to go and then remove the old tank.
So if we could do it that way, that'd be the best.
Because then you could just have them fuel from that tank until it's empty.
Yeah.
But that's how I would phase it, I'd say, go ahead, put the new tank in, we'll put it somewhere where it meets code and it gets permitted and then.
Yeah.
It's done and working and then just use the old tank till it's empty and then go through the.
Yeah, have they got a spot picked out for the new?
Well, Greg was kind of hoping it could go right where the.
That's the problem.
Yeah, yeah, where the old one is, the underground one is.
I suppose they could after, you know, they could put it someplace else.
And then move it, yeah, that's true.
We do, I'll walk up there, I'll drive over there and see what I think.
Okay.
We do permit it for that, so.
Yeah, it should be easy enough to get it, just get it down low and then move it over.
Ten feet from the building and ten feet from the property line.
It's definitely ten feet from the property line and I think it probably is just barely ten feet from the building.
I'll go up, look around.
Yeah.
And then I can talk to Greg about, because it would just make everybody's life easier if we could get the new tank in.
Right.
Then you don't have to deal with figuring out how you're gonna get fuel, well, it'll probably be a few days while this is.
Yeah, and then maybe, maybe they could just put a little bit in the, the above ground one for, to tie him over while that one's.
Yeah.
We can figure it out.
We'll figure it out.
Yeah, because they're gonna put it in the same place, yeah, they're gonna have to put it someplace else.
Yeah.
For a, a week or whatever it takes to get this out of the ground.
Yeah, and then, you know, if, and I'll check about whether or not we can try to sell that underground storage tank used. If, if that's not a possibility, then we would also have, have to hire someone.
Decommission and be done with it.
Decommission it, yeah, which costs about twelve hundred dollars.
Yep. Yeah, well, if it's sellable, it's, even if you had to give it away to somebody that was, you're gonna use it in your shop or something.
True if they want it.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, if you save your twelve hundred bucks.
Rule against it, probably.
Well, that's what I'm figuring, that there might be.
Don't ask, don't tell rule.
Well, they just know, it's just like, where did your old tank go?
Yeah.
We were, we dug it up and someone stole it.
Right, I'm sure we're gonna have, we're gonna have to account for it somehow. And then, you know, Steve Gillespie mentioned that.
I have storage.
A gravel or concrete.
We would be found out.
A pad underneath would be about probably a thousand dollars, and again, that may be something that.
Yeah, it'd be nice, probably.
It's probably a good idea.
Yeah.
So look.
What I really like is a, the parking pad and the tank pad are all one pad, you drive up and it's dishing in a little bit.
Contained with a little bit of.
All right there, and you have a spill.
If you do have a spill, it's on the, it's contained, yeah.
And all might be a little more, but it's the right way to do it, and then put a really nice light over there.
Yeah, there is a, there is the overhead light.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think, yeah, we're gonna do it, we gotta do it right.
Be done with it, I mean, I know we're gonna pay a little extra for that pad, but that's the best way, because then if we do have a major spill, it's contained in that.
If it's gravel, it's gonna soak in and then, and then.
And you gotta dig it all up.
Because what we've had is for figures is that, they're not supposed to, but sometimes they lock the hose in and then walk inside and forget and then.
Yeah, and it doesn't always click on.
Somebody does it somewhere and usually have a major, you know, about the five hundred gallon spill and.
Yeah.
So, um, just a brief, um, any other questions about any of the stuff before the Roku?
Nope.
So we're pretty well covered. Okay, so just a brief, uh, work report, um, we've been pretty much focused on county road up by Greenwood Lake.
Greenwood Lake Road, yeah.
And.
He found those two culverts that desperately needed to be found, so I talked to him, so that's.
Yeah, and those have been replaced.
I think you're gonna see a major difference on the county road, because of the level of traffic that road was receiving and then I hope he's headed up around the corner to buy the. Mobile homes to take that, I think if he fixes those areas, that's a major, major amount of.
Yeah, I think they were planning on doing that today.
Perfect, yeah, it looks good and those culverts I'm sure were miserable to replace and he couldn't even find them today and they were terrible.
Yeah, yeah, and they definitely needed to be replaced.
Yeah, they were.
Yeah, played in rochet. Um, those, uh, let's see, Upper County Road, um, sand, I gotta read my writing, um.
And they had Tim hauling sand.
Yeah, Tim's been hauling sand pretty steady, uh, Cramber Meadow Road, um, Wheeler Hill Road, the school parking lot as much as they could do.
I saw that they put some gravel there.
Yeah, they've graded that, kind of gotten that ready for school, um, they replaced pretty much all the culverts on Greenwood Lake end of County Road, um. And they're, today they'll be working on the sloping, you know, trying to finish it up, I think we'll do it today, tomorrow at the latest, um, so and that. And so they're, and then they'll be, you know, I know on Friday they were headed out to Hydroseed to ditch and they had done. They did do some repair work on, um, one of the ten wheelers that the body, the tensioner for the, um. There's like a track that, for unloading the sand.
Chain, yeah.
Yeah, the chain, um, the tensioner, um, was shot on one of them, so they had to, uh, remove it and replace it, um, get the part from Charlotte Boys. That was a rainy day project last week, um, and, you know, Monday, Greg thought they would be finished with county road, um. Tell you, there's another road that I wrote down, I can't read my writing, but anyway, they.
He's not the only one that does that, I figured, no, like, what the heck did I write? Use your iPhone, there's a record feature and you just talk to yourself, that's what they tell me and.
Yeah, and they have brought some gravel and they've done some work up on West Woodbury Road too, so.
I figured they must be headed to West Woodbury last week, I see the truck loaded with gravel heading towards Hydrick, I want. They gotta be going to West Woodbury, they wouldn't be hauling it that way for anything else.
I think they just hauled it up there and somebody spread it out, um, as far as that, um, the landowner, um.
Yeah, they tore the road up badly up there.
So you'd actually, I haven't made it up there.
Call there that week, that Friday, we had to go up in there and look for a guy that driven out there on the, uh, Sab, uh, it's not Saban's Pond, it's, uh, I don't know what they call that road now.
The Slaton Pond?
Slaton Pond Road, so we were out there at nine, ten o'clock at night and you could see where they tore the town road all up and then there's a kind of a narrowly looking thing, they. Tore everything all to pieces up there.
State guy's supposed to be up there.
Right across from that guy that has the funny house with all the junk in front of it.
It's the same guy.
Oh, it is, okay.
And I know, I know his name, but I'm not gonna say it on camera.
He's supposed to stop at the shop and I told him, either ride up with him.
Okay, great.
Or show him how to get there, but.
Now, is that Jaren or is it the enforcement person that Jaren contacted?
Jaren.
Jaren Borg, yeah.
Yeah, okay, it's Jaren.
He said he would be there on Tuesday, so good, he's contacted you.
Yeah, I gotta, I sent him a message, I said, if you need, I'll find him the place, I'll either ride up with you or show you whatever you need and.
Yeah.
So he said he'd stop in, so, so go up with him if you want, so.
So as far as this, at, from here on, you know, depending on what's, what, take a look at the road when you're there, just to see, but kind of leaving it in the states.
Yeah, because it's definitely a mess.
Yeah.
So we're gonna have to go up there sometime after, yeah.
They just, it's a mess.
Yes, like the whole, the rest of the place.
Yeah, whatever they did, they didn't have any idea.
I don't know if we should send anybody else up, they said he's been doing building two on the property.
Yeah, there's all kinds of stuff there.
I'm sure there are no permits and, you know, electrical, you know, I don't know.
Yeah, who's our building doing now?
Zoning is, uh.
Uh, well, dangerous building person, yeah, zoning administrator is Bob Martin.
Yeah, we should have Bob take a ride up by and at least take a look and see if there's anything that should come under our purview, so.
Yeah. Okay, yeah.
Oh, and so one more thing I gotta talk to about, so add to, send to Greg is that, and I didn't know this either, Chuck was telling me that, that if you go up Foster Hill here where Maple Road comes in. Right where Doug's been doing all his wood cutting there, apparently is a DI that's completely buried with sawdust there, that, well, that water's supposed to come to run in there, now it's running out in the road.
Okay.
He mentioned it, he goes, you know, there's a DI drain right there that's.
Now, where is this?
Right at Stilley's.
Oh, okay.
You know, the, right where, he says there's a drain.
There is right on that.
Totally buried with sawdust.
You usually got a car parked over the top of it.
Says he probably, Greg should get over there and clean it out.
That's usually where he piles his logs.
Right, he says, he goes, the logs go there and then they chop them up and now there's probably three feet of sawdust over it and it's plugged up. And that's why the water's coming down and all that dirt's washing down, because I didn't know there was one there and he says.
I didn't know there was one there.
He bet nobody else does either, but it's there, because he and I were talking at the firehouse.
Pretty sure I'd seen it before, but it's hidden now, because it looks like it's usually a vehicle.
So that's probably they wanna add to their list before winter to go clean it off and maybe talk to Doug about not.
Yeah, I'll, I'll let Greg, Greg know about that tomorrow, yeah.
Because you get these structures to deal with water and they get buried and you never, I don't know it was there.
Right. Okay, good, I'll mention that to Greg tomorrow. Um, so, um, pretty much, any other questions about the town highway stuff?
Have them keep grading.
Yeah.
And hear how great the roads are.
Yeah, okay, good, good. Um, so, onto the school roof, I'm, I'm just gonna talk about the school roof, not the entryway, that's kind of a supervisory union, um, thing, but. I just wanna review, um, the change orders that happened and, and, um, just give a, there should be no more change orders, they should be done.
So they are finished up there?
They were working there today, I assume that they'll be done.
I went there doing some siding when I went there Saturday.
Yeah, they'll be doing, um, they should be done soon, if, you know, if not today, tomorrow, um, when they'll be totally out of there.
Does it, school being there?
Yeah, school is now in session, so, um, so, um, there was the change order number one, we're all, where we, you know, we had the meeting about the sheeting. So, um, and that eventually, that was seven thousand four hundred dollars after we came in agreement with them. Change order number two was for the, um, the drip edge and the steel.
Approved that one.
Yeah, which we approved and that was for three thousand seven hundred and thirty one dollars. And then change order number three that we did approve at our last select board meeting, that became incorporated into change order number four. Because they found more siding.
That was rotten.
Yeah, and, and these, you know, they would definitely, they, the foreman would check in with Larry, um, and then Larry was seeing stuff too and saying, oh, you know, how about maybe this too, so. It was kind of a back and forth between Larry and the, and the.
Yeah, and this is all on the roof, the.
Well, we're siding around roof edges and.
Yeah.
Yeah, around roof edges, there was some siding around the, um, the elevator.
Lobby there.
Lobby area, so.
And like you said, they're up there, it's time.
You're not gonna get it done any cheaper.
Yeah, all stuff that needed a lift, so.
Yeah.
That, um, so change order number three, which was incorporated into change order number four, um, that, the total for that, um, is five thousand three hundred and eighty dollars. And, you know, over half of that is the lift rental, five hundred dollars a day. And then, um, change order number five, um, was for, um, some skirt board replacement, um, around the bottom of the building and some painting and priming of some of the. The siding that they replaced, again, you know, these are things that Larry requested that they do, um, you know, they checked in with me, we talked about it, the road foreman. So it was all, you know, um, and or, you know, the timeframe was to make a decision before this meeting tonight.
Yeah.
But that came to three thousand two hundred and five dollars. So the total, um, for the four change orders, um, came to nineteen thousand seven hundred and sixteen dollars.
We didn't do too bad then.
No, so the original bid was for fifty one thousand, so, um, you know, with the extra work that we asked them to do, the total came to about seven one thousand dollars. So our little nest egg for the third year of our lease agreement with the new unit district is a little smaller, but.
Still there.
Yeah, still there.
And we got some work that needed to be done.
Now, isn't some of the entryway gonna eat up some of that?
No, this, the entryway was through a grant.
Okay.
Through the supervisory union, so it's totally outside of the towns, we aren't paying, we aren't paying for that.
What, they got a temporary door there now, it'll be plywood or something?
I think so, yeah, yeah.
Best laid plans, they had the wrong door.
Had the wrong, they, they had ordered the door, but the, the people they ordered it from sent the wrong size, so obviously it wasn't gonna fit, so.
Wow, so they're getting into the school from via the other side of the building?
There, the new entryway will be, um, there'll be like a double, um, you know how you.
Two doors, you walk in, you just walk in the middle, so you go down.
Right now, that's blocked off.
There's some kind of, I don't know what's there.
Probably built a plywood door.
Yeah, they built a plywood door, I can say, yeah.
But all, all of the, the, um, safety features for the entryway, um, all of that's working and in place, it's just that the actual physical door for one of the entries is not.
Yeah.
There yet, so, yeah, I don't know what they.
Pretty sad, we gotta be at a place like this where we've gotta do this to our schools.
Yeah, you know, what you do is you walk in and you can go downstairs, but you can't go upstairs, unless they buy the door across or they can let you know.
So they can buzz you to go upstairs.
Yeah, you walk in the building, once you met with the office, then you can go back up and they can let you go up the stairs, so.
So if as a teacher, they probably can just buzz you up or.
Teachers or people who have official, they have cards, they just stick a card in, let's them in, yeah.
How's this affect the people using the gym at night, is it unlocked at that time or something?
We'll have to work that out with, um.
Yeah, I don't know the answer to that.
I don't know the answer to that either.
Because there's a lot of people play pickleball upstairs and on to ends, something.
We'll have to figure that one out, um, I guess what I.
Do you really don't want everybody having cards to access the upstairs?
Right, so whether that's something that they need to check in with the principal or, I guess I'll, I'll try to find out.
But that'll be starting for too long.
Yeah, it will, yeah, and are there any other town uses of the building off, you know, out of time, out of school time?
Use it, they use it for the pie breakfast.
Well, yeah, that would be, yeah.
That is occasionally to vote.[1689.58]
Yeah, voting, yeah, sometimes, and then the town meeting.
Lock it open for something like that.
I think I'll check with Don first, because he's the building grounds maintenance person.
See how that's going to work.
See what, what we should do about that.
Extracurricular, because I'm sure there's probably a lot of different people, I think I've seen the women up there playing pickleball in the gym too in the winters, yeah, yeah, so, yeah, that, it gets a fair amount of use.
Yeah, so we need to figure that out, yeah, good, good thought, I hadn't, hadn't even crossed my mind to.
All right, yeah.
So, I'll be giving these change, Randy has a file on all this, so I'm going to, I'll be giving her these change orders, and whoops, we'll have a record of it, and it should be done in the next few days. And no more change orders.
Because they left, so we're good.
Right.
But on the upside, I mean, a lot of that's work that needed doing, you're going to have to do it eventually, so.
Yeah, it would have been, yeah.
We would have had to have hired somebody to come back, and they would have needed.
Place siding, and they would have had to go over the lift, so you're still just not going to get it done cheaper.
It's definitely time to do it.
Yeah, it's good for them, they're there, I think we'll let the money on it.
Yeah, yeah, so, this last item on our agenda, the town plan development grant, we've got sent over to the Regional Planning Commission, you know, I, I am on the planning commission, and the work just isn't getting done.
I see that they sent out something from the state asking if you wanted to get a grant to hire those guys, yeah?
You know, with my work as the town rep for the Regional Planning Commission Board of Commissioners, I've been talking with Bonnie Wanniger, who's the director of the Regional Planning Commission, about our town plan woes, and she mentioned to me a while ago that there is a grant that towns can apply for, to, that would basically pay someone to help the town put together a town plan. So you would apply, you'd apply for the grant, and then you would have like eighteen months to, to have it, get it done. So Skip and I met with Claire Rock, who is one of the senior planners at the Regional Planning Commission, to go over the application, and just ask her questions, and she, you know, informed us about the process, and we felt in, in meeting with her, and Skip was on the planning commission too, so that we would, rather than put it out to bid, we would just go with them being the people that would do the work for us.
It's a pretty good system for them, because.
It is, no, this is, this is it, I mean, they're.
They know it.
It's work, it's guaranteed work.
It's daunting, it's guaranteed work for them, they get reimbursed for it, you know, because they're giving us the money to reimburse themselves.
It's a, it's a ninety, ten matching grant, so, and Claire figures that it would cost the Regional Planning Commission about eight thousand dollars to do the work.
And it'll be done right.
And then it would be an eight hundred dollar.
Town match.
Town match, and we could spread it over two fiscal years, so, it's pretty easy that way, and then the other part.
And it has to be done, right?
It, well.
We're way overdue.
We're, the last approved plan was two thousand and three, so.
Okay, so, it's a no-brainer.
It's a no-brainer, I mean, it would be of benefit to the town.
When you're applying for other grants.
For other grants.
It gets always a catch, yeah.
Yeah, every other town, I think there's one other town that doesn't, at this moment in our central remote region, that doesn't have an approved town plan. Yeah, it would be of benefit.
I know we sat down and worked on it a couple nights, but we just didn't finish it off.
We did, yeah, I mean, we came, we came really close, and, and this would be, you know, the alternative, I'm kind of getting ahead of myself now, I would, I would hope that we would receive the grant, but if we don't get the grant, we've come very close to getting a grant that would be legally done enough to be approved. You know, though, the current group, planning commission group just felt like we're working on something that's really kind of old and outdated, and it just feels like we're, you know, putting Band-Aids on a, on a dead horse or something.
Got it.
And so, so this, if we get the grant, we'll basically start from the beginning, you know, and the town, or the planning commission's responsibility would be doing the oversight of getting town participation and input for the information for the plan.
They, they must have a lot of data down there, and they know how it needs to get put together.
Right, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, they've got it formatted all set out.
So they, what they do.
So it will make it go.
Yeah, and we can have.
Want to do it.
Parts of it, you know, we talked a little bit about.
We've done them before, they're a real pain.
Yeah, they are, they're a lot of work.
They're a lot of work.
Yeah, and, you know, I've never done it, I mean, kind of looked, sit down to figure out, oh, you know, I know what's supposed to be in there.
Yeah, the last one that we did, we come down a couple weekends and put it together, and they approved it, but they've gotten a lot tougher since then.
Yeah, and there's a lot, a lot more things that are required.
A lot more things.
By state statute, so, so that's kind of the plan. The, the grant application is due the end of September, so there's a time, you know, there are two, we have to submit, and actually, here I go again, Skip had, was on the table here when I came in, so he had done this this afternoon. It's got little yellow tags on it, so it should be easy to find on the, it was here on the table. So, we have to, the planning commission and the select board need to sign a, here it is, kind of commitment for this, we had planned, Skip and I, when we parted ways this morning, or this noon down Montpelier, we were going to have a special, a planning commission meeting next Thursday to go over this and approve it, and, and then we will, we're going to present it to the select board at the next select board meeting. A resolution form, basically, so, looks like, I mean, if, so this would, this is for the select board to sign, if, if you would prefer that the planning commission, although it looks like Skip has got it set up, so that I, as the chair of the planning commission, could sign it tonight also, but I, I guess it's just a matter of how do we want to proceed on this, so, do you, would the select board prefer that the planning commission review this first and approve?
When is the next meeting?
Our next meeting is September ninth, so we would have plenty of time, it would just mean that the planning commission would have to hold a special meeting, which is not, which is not a big deal.
Okay.
We could do that. Or we.
Yeah, whatever makes it easier for you guys.
I think it needs to be done, so.
Okay.
Sooner we get it done.
Well, and I know Skip and I were in agreement, and I'm pretty sure.
Let's just move to, move forward with the grant.
Okay, all right, so, so I tell you, what I will do is check in with the two other planning commission members by phone, so I won't, will not sign the part for the planning commission as a chair, because I want to be able to, you know, speak with the other two planning commission.
Sure, yeah.
But we're in favor of it.
Yeah, we're in favor of it.
Okay, so.
Do you need our signatures on anywheres, or you guys?
Yeah, we do, all three of us, so, alternate authorizing official for redundancy, Brian Shatney, select board member, Thomas Lindsay as the auditor, and then all three of us as a legislative body, so, I guess I'm just an alternate authorizing official, or I'm the authorizing official, you're the alternate, and Skip would also be the alternate as, as an auditor, and then the three of us need to sign it as select board members. So, so I would make a motion that we assign, that we sign the resolution form to apply for the application for municipal planning grant application.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye, aye.
Okay, so let's, we'll sign here.
Get my sign new pen out.
Oh, yeah, I got, got the wrong.
Not the red.
No, the blue.
I don't want red on the paper, that knows we had problems with the paper.
And then Brian, you could sign it in both places as the alternate authorizing agent, and we'll get Skip, Skip can, and I can sign it up for the planning commission parts that we meet next, we're going to try to meet next Thursday.
So we'll sign it here, there's no place for signature.
Yeah, it does. So maybe it just designates that you, that you're an alternate, yeah, who is the, either the chief executive officer is defined by blah, 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 or select board member, or town manager, city manager, town administrator is hereby designated to serve, okay, so it's just officially that your name is there, you don't need to sign it, I guess. I haven't, this was on the table when I entered, I haven't even read it back there, and there's a particular government entity, I think it's federal, that, that we have to sign in on to do any of the, the application in, and Skip did that for the local hazard mitigation plan through a different sign-in agency, so he was familiar with the routine.
Yeah.
Asked me if, would you like me to do this, and I said, yes.
Yeah.
He does like his paper.
So, so we'll, we'll discuss this as a planning commission, and once I get approval from the other two, we'll either meet on Thursday of next week to do this as a group in a meeting, or if I get approval from the other two over the phone, probably, if we can meet, that's the preferred, because then we can warn the meeting and make it, it'll all be totally above board, and, and then we'll.
Get the grant.
Yeah, we'll do the application, and now Claire will help us in filling that out.
Yeah, maybe the next time around, if the state doesn't change everything that we live in, we'll do our own next time.
Good luck.
Yeah, that's not going to happen.
They'll change it, so, yeah, yeah.
Those people whose job is that, they're just changing stuff.
So, wow, I don't believe it.
Got through the pile?
It's, we got through the pile, and it's eight P M.
Eight and clock, motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, all right, wow.